Okay, we have a thumbs up. It's six o'clock. We're ready to start the committee of the whole. McGuffey School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Good evening, good Thursday evening to everyone. First up, I'd like to have Mr. Bonus, high school principal, come up and give us an update
Good evening. Just a quick update here as we're putting together all of our final details here about this year's commencement exercise. Obviously, June 4th is the day that we're focused in on. The ceremony is being planned for outside at the high school stadium, McGuffey Stadium. Our backup location will be the high school gym. So we'll be set up for both. We'll also have a podium for both, and it says some things there in the letter I left with you with your with your set of tickets here. We'll be set up for both. It'll follow a similar exercise that you're familiar with that we conduct in the high school gym. Same thing, the seating outside will look very similar. The stage out on the field will look very similar. We've been given the green light by Mr. McKee, and he and I have talked about capacities and what we can do to make it safe and to keep our field from being damaged by anything that we would put on it. So we've covered all those bases. The students are aware of everything. They're very excited about the possibility of going outside, and we're going to hope for the best weather we can. If we have inclement weather, like I said, we'll move inside. We'll give enough tickets here. Our capacity in the gym is about 1,300 is what we can see sort of comfortably. But students will receive six tickets, and that will also mean if they need more, chances are we'll be able to give them more because there's only 110 graduates. So we should be in good shape. It's a very small class, the smallest class we've had in a long time. But I think, you know, we're putting together all the pieces. We have the bagpiper, the faculty's invited. We're hoping for a good turnout from our faculty across the district, K to 12, and we use them to sort of ring in the graduates. So working out the logistics on the timing, obviously, the kids would would come in through the two side gates, et cetera. But I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to pull up a very nice exercise, and if we get some good weather, I think it'll be a good one to remember on a outstanding facility. So any questions about graduation specifically? I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Next, we have an update from Ms. Todd about the preliminary budget as of April 15.
I'm gonna let Mrs. Seifer pass those out while I... So we've been working, still working on the budget. We still have a long way to go. You'll see that we adopted the preliminary budget of 35.4 back in April, and since then, we've gone in and we've aligned some contracts and adjusted a few things out. We finally got the CTC budget, so our new total right now is 35.1. Talking with Dr. Ilberg, the guidance counselor position that we have open, he would like to fund that with the ESRS III money, so we added that revenue back in. So our current deficit right now is 2.6, 2,607,450. You can see I listed the two tax increases that are open to the board. You have your index, which is around 423,000, and then the exceptions for the special ed costs is the 503. If you did both of those, your deficit would be 1.68. Dr. Ilberg and I are still going to get together next week and still go through some line items and see what else we have available, but we wanted to get you this update as of right now. We're still working on it.
Thank you.
We do not have any state subsidy increases budgeted at this time either, so in the event that that comes through, I'm not holding my breath, but we, you know.
What percentage of our budget's from the state?
Um, it's about, it's about 50. It's over half, so.
Right.
And I can't find it here, so.
I think it's like 54% or something from the state.
Something like that, yeah. See if I find it out. If I added one here, I thought.
I know we had to five turd that one.
Yeah, well, we get 32% of is basic ed and 4%, that's our subsidy. But our overall state subsidy is 17 million, and our local subsidy's 13, so.
Okay, so it's more than half our budget.
More than half our budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Todd. I have just a brief update about COVID. As we're made all aware last week, the CDC came out with new guidelines in regards to face covering and physical distancing. Keeping that in mind, we still have the aspect that anyone that is not vaccinated, has not received either one or two doses of vaccinations, should still follow those guidelines. PD this past week has recommended schools continue to follow those current mitigation stance that we're taking, and that includes wearing a face mask. So at this point, I just want to make everyone aware that we're continuing to do that. We have 10 school days left. And in addition to what we do day in, day out to keep our staff, our students, and in effect, our community, safe, we've also partnered with the UPMC. They came in last week to do the first round of Pfizer shots, COVID shots, and that included anyone that was 16 years and older, along with any community members who come in. It's all free. The second round for that will be June 3rd from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and again, open to the community, as well as, at that time, anyone now that is 12 and up with parent permission can also receive a shot. And we'll set up a separate date in the summertime here at McGuffey for those receiving it the first time, which would be June 3rd. So I just want to give you just a quick update where we are. Questions? Okay. Next, we just want to talk quickly about looking at the district, the facility tour. Is that something Amy wants to take?
Yeah, if we had the building facility meeting a couple of weeks back, and one of the items that we talked about was having the board do a tour of the district, Mr. McKee would like to schedule that. We were looking for dates of when you would be able to possibly do that tour. Mr. McKee, you wanted to start at Claysville, correct?
Yeah, I would like to. Yeah, Claysville, Joe Walker, then up here we have on that night.
I don't know if everybody wanted to stay with a Thursday. That's kind of the dates that we always seem to meet.
So we'll put that out there. Email those that don't receive and make sure we get that to you.
Check your calendars.
Yes, we certainly will schedule that time right now. I think we were saying six o'clock, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, six o'clock on June 9th. If it doesn't work for everyone, let's work out a date that we can do that here soon.
On June 9th?
No, he wanted to do it before June.
Oh, before, I'm sorry.
Before June 9th, so.
Yes, before June 9th.
Well, I know this next week we have a graduation, so that 27th will not work.
Okay.
I've got a lot of days in between.
Okay.
Yep.
We can look at the 3rd.
Yeah, do we have baccalaureate on that night?
Sure do.
I'd like to be at that.
That goes without saying. So we can work out a date.
It's a busy time of year.
It is.
That's for sure. So we'll try to get that scheduled so we can get a date together so everybody has an opportunity to come.
Thank you.
Next, we are looking at renewal of our technology contract. Amy, you want to take that one, too?
Yes, so we have a contract with CCL that's expiring. We put out a request for proposal. There were five companies that expressed interest. We've gotten those back. We're in the process of reviewing the proposals and interviewing the companies so that next month we can have a contract for you, a recommendation to hire. But we wanted, like we always do, we wanted to give you the heads up that it's coming so that you weren't blindsided next month with a with a contract. So we're working on that. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead. You have the next two, so.
Yeah, I got the next two. Every year, we have to do the cafeteria contract. So we have a contract this year. I don't know, we had, I had originally put it on the agenda, the deficit was greater, but as of today, we learned that the state is going to reimburse the summer food service, the SSO program at the summer food service rate. So that enabled us to change the revenue. So we're asking you to adopt this budget. It's a $952,000 expenditure and a $942,000 revenue, which gives us a deficit of $9,205.82. Yes, it's a lot better. What we have, some of the things that are in there that could put us the other direction is right now the food cost is running above a dollar. So we're hoping that we can keep that under a dollar. If that happens, we should make more money, you know, we would, the revenue would cover it. We also did not budget the à la carte sales the same as we had in the past because we assumed that, we didn't know what was happening with COVID, so we were conservative on that. And then we also reduced the attendance sales a little bit because of the people going out to the cyber school last year. So we're looking, we're hoping that you'll go with nutrition again. We've had a good partnership with them. We can do that at least another year and before we have to do an RFP. And so that's the proposed budget. We're asking for a 10 cent increase in prices, but it doesn't really affect anybody because with the summer food service program next year, everybody's free. So that would enable us, if we do it this year, potentially in the following year, we, you know, depending on that equity, we may not have to do any, or we could do a 5 cent, we wouldn't have to go up. But it, since it doesn't impact anybody this year, we're asking for the 10 cent increase. And we are looking to do the SSO program and do so that everybody eats free. And if anybody has any questions, I know Sarah from Nutrition is here as well if we had any questions for them. And Paige does a wonderful job, I think, you know, she works well with the staff, so.
So that sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you back there.
The next one is, we have on there the Tritchell contract. We don't have a contract yet with that, with, we do have a contract with her, but not for this. Julie Tritchell, they do, we work with them for our E-rate. So as part of the stimulus package that they passed, they allotted $7 billion to E-rate to help fund hotspots and technology, and they've now made the decision that schools are going to be able to apply for that money. So she is, you know, she's the consultant and works with them. So I attended a webinar with her the other day. We're still trying to figure out what we can get with that money. I do know it has to be stuff that goes offsite. It can't be in the building. They can bring it into the building, but they have to be able to take it home. So hopefully, we can have a contract to bring back next month so that we can apply for some of some of those funds. The, in the, in the stimulus package, they also have the ability for individuals to apply for hotspots, and they can make application on their own to get money from the government. One of the things that we have to be careful of is if they apply personally, we can't get one for them, so we have to watch that crossover. But we have to work on getting that information out to families so that if they're interested in doing that on their own, we can do that. So I just wanted to bring that up, that there's another pot of money out there that we're going to try and potentially get some, get some funding for.
The next item is mine. It's posed a building administration model, one actually that has existed at McGuffey in the past, but I want to put an emphasis on the idea that we're going to build a model that allows for a principal and a building principal in each of the buildings, except for Joe Walker because of class size and the numbers of teachers. One that would have your building principal be your instructional lead. So again, I don't read this to you, you can of course read this, but the idea is that we have responsibilities of our principal that are focused on instruction, assessment, curriculum, and the development and implementation of those aspects. Currently, in the model that we have this year, we have, for example, Mr. Mark Bonus, who is shared by both the high school and middle school. He is able to do his job admirably, but if you were to ask him, what impact does he have in the classroom, from data walks to formal or informal observations, to have the ability even to work with his groups that he has at the end of the day on math or language arts, he would tell you it's very limited. And that's because he's sharing the responsibility of two buildings with one high school assistant principal and one being a student currently. So what I'm asking the board to consider tonight is a model that will allow for a high school principal, high school assistant principal, middle school principal, middle school assistant principal, and then keeping what we have at Joe Walker and keeping what we have at Claysville. Now, having said that, as we also know, we're going to be discussing tonight the director of curriculum instruction position. I have an internal candidate that I wish to present to the board. This will cause a domino effect in our current makeup, which is something that we have to consider. But again, the goal of this position, especially coming out of COVID, knowing that we're facing learning losses at all grades, knowing that our teachers are needing the additional support, is to give it to them. But to give it to them, I have to give my principals the time that they need in their day to do the things that I've discussed. Any questions about that?
The goal is never to keep them split in meetings for long term.
Right.
It was supposed to be during the training meeting, which ended up being extended, and then, you know, now we need to go left. So just to be clear, it's never intended for it to be longer than that.
Right. It went longer than we thought.
Yes. So the idea for it to me of reinstating what we previously had would make sense, but we are going to be down with these one, two people. We have positions to refill.
Right.
And finally, I'll pick that one if you want. Yes, please. Yeah, Mr. Franz wanted to be at the meeting tonight to do the library update. You have it in front of you. When the coronavirus pandemic took hold, the region last spring, it created worry, anxiety, and uncertainty by many, wondering what would happen next. Soon businesses shut down, events canceled, and people were asked to quarantine at home to stop the spread of virus. And libraries, a hub of many communities, were ordered by Governor Tom Wolf, closed indefinitely. Citizens Library in Washington closed to public March 14th, remained that way for more than two months. There's a statewide restriction again, is the library open May 26th. Call for contact is curbside pickup for patrons to drive up in their car and leave the bags full of books or movies. Citizens was the first library in the region to offer this service, which became a popular option to keep both the workers and patrons safe from the virus, also offering people the resources they craved, I think you meant craved, on staying home. By June 22nd, library reopened its doors to the public for limited in-person services. Its library slowly expanded its hours. We found new ways to innovate, to offer different services to the community. During most of 2020, we also offered online storytimes versus Lego club experiences, grab-and-go activity bags, STEM bags, teen chats, and virtual showcases. We also returned in-person activities partnering with Operation Warm and EQT Corporation to distribute coats and books to local children in October. Later that month, library held a trunk or treat walkthrough with Washington Park Elementary Title I, washcloth doors, positive steps, therapy and salvation army to host a safe and socially distanced Halloween activity. Covid-19 cases began to spike across Pennsylvania in the winter, and restrictions returned in December, we were able to lean many of those virtual options to continue offering experiences to the community. Library reopened to the public in March and even held a honorable day for Washington Park's school students in the parking later that month. We expanded hours again in April and now are open on Saturdays. If we slow the return to normalcy this summer, we are planning various activities and events such as a summer reading club, stories in Washington Park, and evening out, and outdoor movie night. Over the past year, we've innovated and found new and exciting ways to serve the community, and we expected it to continue moving forward. Thank you for your support over the past year. That's from Mr. Franz. And then there's a, there's a drive-in concert, the Washington Symphony Orchestra, Nebraska, Lynn Ted, is playing June 11th from 7:00 to 8:00 in the library parking lot.
Mr. President, that is all I have for the meeting today.
All right. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we will start with the regular meeting.
I'm going to pause the meeting at this point, and then at 6:25, we will resume.
I'm coming.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we have a thumbs up. We're going to get ready to start the May 20th, 2021 Virtual Public Regular School Board Meeting. We are going to jump through the schedule a little bit because we're getting started early and the students of the month aren't here and the high school student council rep's not here yet. So we'll go back to them. But I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Group?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Lager?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Shingle?
Present.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Ms. Shigenda?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the fudge of the flag.
The budget reaches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're down to public comment on agenda, non-agenda items. Mr. Group?
Um, I don't, didn't get the agenda in time, but I'm waiting to see if you guys tick me off and I'll be there for the next one.
We do them at the same time now. Yeah. Yeah. You have one chance to comment now.
Exactly.
Changed it how long ago, Mr. Group? When COVID hit. Yeah, back March.
Oh, well.
Who's next?
You're lost. I had such wisdom to participate.
I know. Mr. Group? Justin, uh, Capola? Okay, Justin? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm new at this. I'm Justin Capola. I live in the McGuffey School District with my wife and daughter. I'm a follower of Jesus Christ and he is shining his light on a couple of things and I'm here to present this on public record for the parents who may not know what happened back on November 24th, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Dr. Oprick and I, we were going back and forth today very respectfully. And I asked him about the attestation form that was sent to every school in the Commonwealth from the PA Department of Health and Education back on November 24th. I was directed by him to the McGuffey School Board page to view the minutes documented. He didn't provide an attachment of the attestation form that should have been open to the public knowledge with a date in which it was signed. When I clicked on the tab that said, quote, "Addestation Mitigation Update for December 3rd, 2020", on the McGuffey School Board page, there was no action, motion, or voting on it for public record to see, but it wouldn't matter because it had to be submitted before November 30th. I just wanted to know what the date in which that was signed, since I didn't know and a lot of other parents didn't know. Wolf and his administration and Dr. Levine wanted the public schools to do as they said and say. They pressured the schools by only having till November 30th to make a decision and respond to this form. The parents had no knowledge of this from the decisions were made that the parents obviously would have disagreed with. I heard multiple testimonies. I listened to a lot. And it seems as though when it was back in November with the four or five day, like consolidated together, it was about 80% of the parents said, let's, let's get back, let's get back to do this. But at least from what I was heard, at least from the board, I think December 3rd was, we had to sign it and it was a non-voting item. But I have three points. There was no public meeting about this attestation form that was against the parents' request in November of 2020 until after this form was signed. The superintendent, and the second point, the superintendent and president, at least by the protocol of the PA Constitution and school code, they don't have the authority without the, the board's consent. And last, the school board who we elect determine the operation of the school, not the state. That's protected by the PA Constitution and school code. So I guess my question would be, will you provide to the public the November 24th attestation form to show the timeframe of when it was signed? So that the parents can know, because I, I certainly want to know. I, I'm not here to like have an argument or anything. I, I just, I would imagine that something like that is important as it might, it should be, that the parents should know about, about that. And um, I believe that every school, school district in the Commonwealth should probably, or at least the parents should be asking these questions. Many schools are fighting back to give the rightful power back to the parents who understand the proper procedures. An example of a hearing that will take place to fight Governor Wolf and his administration and Dr. Levine in this attestation form that has really gripped public schools tremendously, like really has gripped a lot of public schools. It's going to be on June 9th. The school district is Butler area school district. So I guess the, just the main question would be, what was the date in which that document was signed? And would you be open to having that out to the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? No progress. Nobody's doing. Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Group, we do have a few attendees in the meeting at this point online. If anybody is in attendance and they wish to participate in public comment, please use the raise hand function on your screen at this point. Mr. Group, I do not see any raised hands at this point.
Alrighty.
Oh, we do have one.
Okay.
Katie Morris, you can unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Um, yeah, I was just wanting to make a public comment about using our.
What township? Please.
South Franklin.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, I wanted to make a comment about using our school as a vaccine clinic. There are plenty of clinics around Washington County and others that use, that have vaccine clinics available to everyone. I mean, you can go down to your local Walgreens and get a vaccine if you choose so. Um, I don't see why we're using our school as a vaccine clinic when they can get it readily almost anywhere at this point. Um, also, I have one last thing to say and I lost my train of thought. Please hold. Um, the other thing I want to bring up is that, uh, just in this meeting, you mentioned that those who are vaccinated would not need to wear a mask anymore. So in my eyes, this is called segregation. So we will have those that don't want to get the vaccine or their parents choose not to get the vaccine for their children because we are, we should respect parental consent and informed consent and not manipulate our public, our students and teachers to take an experimental jab that is not FDA approved. It is only experimental. A right to try, right? So what, we are going to be using this as a manipulation tool that, oh, well, if you don't have your COVID vaccine by the school year, you're going to have to wear a mask again. This is segregation. It's what, what happens with the kids that bully those who have a mask on? It's obvious that they didn't get vaccinated and now they're going to make fun of them. What about teachers or staff treating children with masks on that chose not to get vaccinated? Choosing, making them feel less than or putting them in the back of the classroom because maybe they're afraid of them? There's a lot of problems with this. I hope that you guys take this all into consideration. Um, and I will be following up with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Mr. Wilson?
At this point, there are no other hands raised.
Alrighty. Moving on to monthly action items. Motion to approve the general fund schedule bill. Still move? Second. Motion is second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the food service schedule bill. Still move? Second. Motion is second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. How about treasurer's report? Yeah, why don't we do that? You need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month. Still move? Second. The motion is second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. You need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Care Center, Inc. and McGuffey School District for school-based mental health services and note charge this district. Second. The motion is second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. You need a motion to approve participation in emergency substitute program coordinated by inter-meeting in a one at a cost of $400 for the 2021, 2022 school year. Second. I have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. You need a motion to approve the letter of agreement between the Center for Community Resources and McGuffey School District for Student Assistance Liaison Services. I have a motion. Second. And a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed. That's the outside in, correct?
I am too. I, I have questions about that.
No.
No?
That is the next one. Yeah, that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Okay.
I do that too.
I'm a yes for the Center for Community Resources. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I got ahead.
You need a motion to approve the letter of agreement between outside in school with experiment, experiential learning of McGuffey School District for services for school-based substance abuse treatment provider for the 2021, 2022 school year of no cost to district. Is this something we've had before? We need a motion first. I'll make a motion. Second. I have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion? Is this a new program or is this something we've had before? Is this? This is something we've had before. Yeah, this is just a continuation for those students that, uh, again, due to substance abuse, they have, we provide this in class.
And it's voluntary for the student or is this something that we?
I'll, I'll ask. Yeah.
Yes, it's the same agreement that the last three years that I've been here, word for word. In regards to sometimes under a discipline, we might require, but typically it is a voluntary thing. One of the biggest resources that we've really appreciated about them is coming in and doing, um, BAP awareness groups with our kids. And again, completely voluntary, but we know that that's a genuine problem with our, for our kids. So it's great to be able to offer that education to them free of charge.
Did I just hear you say that you sometimes use this under disciplinary reasons?
Yes, we do. Sometimes we recommend that in our discipline meetings, whenever we have a board meeting, when we have a meeting for discipline, whenever they come to the board to have the hearing. I don't think you've been involved in one yet, so.
No, because I would have a huge problem with recommending drug and alcohol. Treatment or rehabilitation is a disciplinary measure.
It's not a discipline dependent in those type of proceedings. To make clear that it is still voluntary on the part of the parents and the students. It's not a decision made in terms of, this is the disciplinary outcome. It's, this is a recommendation.
And if they choose not to participate, does it affect the disciplinary outcome?
It would get back to a normal discipline case and depending upon what the violation is, it would be adjudicated.
Kenny, you're talking about the cases that we hear in the room over there.
Yeah. Administration doesn't do that. It's you guys.
It's on, it's drugs or alcohol in the school.
Well, any major, any major violation of school policy that requires suspension or expulsion. And if they choose to have a hearing in front of the board, we have the hearing. We're, don't have any information as to what it occurred or how it occurred or who it was until we get to the hearing.
It's generally offered as an alternative to expulsion.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Lager?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shingle?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Shigenda?
Yes.
Mr. Group?
Yes.
Seven of the two.
Okay. You need a motion to accept the donation of $100 from the West Alexander American Leech in October. Second. 656 to the Clayville Life Skills Program. I have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? On the donations, I'd like to read the whole thing.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. You need a motion to approve the list of candidates from the graduating class of 2021 for the purpose of awarding and diploma providing, provided the requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Still move? And McGuffey School District has always satisfied. I have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion?
We have a number of, how many?
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and nine. Nine? Well, I don't know who first name, last name is, but it's in row 54. I was looking down through, I said, who's first name?
I believe Mr. Bonus just.
I was going to talk, I wasn't going to bring it up, but he said, right? I'm just telling you. It's all kind of, first name, last name, I don't know. Must have waited for that person to come across the board. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Question approved, yep. All, approved to alter the 2020, 2021 school calendar to reflect June 9th, 2021 as district. And all schools flow. I have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion?
No, I'd like to kind of explain the motion. It's Dr. Oprick. Do you want to explain that?
Absolutely. As a way to show gratitude and appreciation to the entire staff, everyone involved with McGuffey for this past year, the board decided to give the very last day, which was a personal development day, as a day that they can take that off. And, um, the gesture, I'm sure many of you saw the emails coming back from the staff was overwhelmingly. It was just a joy and, and thank you to this board for recognizing the effort that the entire school put forward during this pandemic. So I, on behalf of the McGuffey staff, I want to say thank you for this gesture.
Least we could do. And the students of the month aren't here yet, correct?
Can we vote on that?
Oh. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Alright, is there a need for executive session? There is need. All those in favor?
Before we, can I make a motion for something before that?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to, um, look at that policy concerning the cyber school and VOTEC. We were looking at that. We were going to revise it. It was from 2006 and we got into the pandemic and we were trying to concentrate on just getting people educated. And I could appreciate that, but that mother came in here every month for a long time and we pushed those people right over to Avella District where she is getting her child paid to VOTEC. And we cannot do that again. I, it's not community, it's not community friendly. These people have been paying taxes for 30 years. And at that time, that mother was told by a guidance counselor from the end of one school year till it started the next and her son was going and then she had to come up with the money on her own. There's a mother right now that's in a similar situation that has called me. I know she spoke to Dr. Oprick and that's a similar thing. They pay taxes for 30 years. Her children are homeschooled and she would like him to, uh, to attend VOTEC. We really need to fix that policy, to look at it. I'd like to make a motion that we review that policy and make positive changes. And I mean, as soon as possible. So this child, we don't lose them too. I mean, they could move to Avella too and then we don't have any tax dollars.
I will second that, that motion.
Could you state your motion again, please?
My motion was to look at the policy from 2006. I do not have the number on it. But it's the policy that says
Yes.
that homeschoolers cannot have their VOTEC option paid for with school money.
That's really not what the policy says.
That's what you all said at the time.
The policy says that if you're homeschooled, you cannot participate in any curricular offerings from the district.
Okay, well, let's look at that policy.
I, that's.
But that's what the, it doesn't happen because VOTEC is a curricular offering from the district.
Okay, well, I would still like to make a motion that we look at that policy, seriously, look at it and see if we can't.
See if it needs revised?
Well, it was 2006. A lot of things have changed since then. We are, I mean, if we're losing tax dollars, I mean, it passes, but we say we're community friendly. That's not community friendly.
Well, we are, we are starting to have our own cyber school.
Okay, but what if their parents are not into cyber school? You're, they can't choose homeschool?
They can.
I, I think what she's asking for is to look at the policy.
And see if we can revise.
That problem. And let's review it and see if we can revise it.
I believe it's 137 in-home instruction, I believe.
And I seconded that motion.
I'd like to have a copy of that policy too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, a second.
Thank you.
To review the policy?
To review the policy, yes.
Yes, I would like to review.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll send you the, the policy.
Okay.
I have a couple other things before we go to executive session. As far as the question that Mr. Capola asked, do we have a copy of the attestation signed and can we make it public?
It's in the. Yes, 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 absolutely. If you respond to it, yes.
Okay, and then as far as Katie Morris bringing up, I'm glad she brought it up because that was my question as far as using the school as a vaccine clinic.
Sounds like it's a convenience.
Yeah.
To encourage people who wouldn't normally go out of their way to be vaccinated.
Or some, or some people would say that we're using it as a measure to intimidate.
Isn't that an opinion?
Well, isn't the, isn't, it's an opinion that it's used as a convenience measure?
Absolutely.
The point is, there are many places in the community where one can go to get a free vaccine. So I'm just curious, first of all, this is the first, um, you know, we're hearing about this for the, from the community. Why would that not have to go through the board for approval? Um, and how does that not violate some HIPAA concerns and everything else? Why, there's, it seems to me that there's enough places in the community that it's not needed.
Well, we want to be a community friendly place. Yet we offer that.
Don't use Mrs. Shingle's words to try to, to pacify me. She did use those words, but the truth of the matter is she was talking about something completely different. This is a highly controversial topic and we're using our schools as a, a school as a platform to push or pull one way or the other over a highly controversial topic. That's the point.
If I may, um, because it's, it's coming directly through me, so let me address those concerns. First, it's fully voluntary. And at a time where we're facing a pandemic that as many of us who have experienced it know that it's very real. know that it's very real, my entire family had at one point COVID. And I still have effects from it this very day, sitting here with my breathing because of that. So I, as a school, and again, I'm not going to use those words exactly, but we are the hub of this community. And as a school, from the superintendent's point of view, I see that as something that is essential to our community.
Yeah.
So I'm offering it voluntarily to the staff first, as you all well know, we offered up the one shot and not every staff member participated and that was fine. It's completely voluntary, it's up to them. But it was a matter of convenience at that point to offer to them and I see it the same way moving forward. If families want to partake, we're offering it through our school because this is a hub, it's the place everybody knows they can come to. And we're providing it right there for them. If they don't want to come, you know, we're not, we're not pushing it. I'm not, you know, going to people that I know in our school, I haven't received, that's not happening. I just want you to know. It's truly, truly, truly meant from the standpoint of keeping our community safe and this is a vehicle to do that. That's really the heart for me.
Well, I think it's, from one thing, when you're talking about adults, but we've been doing 16 and up, now we're targeting 12 and up.
Yep.
And when you get to the minors, I'm sorry, that should be a, a decision for the parents at home, for them to take care of in the community, not at school.
It is their decision.
Just for me, both, anyone that is 16 years or now, at least now, at least 12, it requires a parent permission. So this is not something that we're having groups of students go down and have vaccine. In fact, the parent has to sign a consent to allow for this to happen. So again, there's nothing, we're not communicating in our classrooms, there's not an announcement saying you need to go get the shot. It's a voluntary, but by the way, it happens to be from this time and it's being held here. I really want that to be understood.
Thank you. I, I have a question on the end of that. One thing that this young lady said was in the fall, we would be looking at, I certainly hope we're not looking at masks in the fall, since the governor's even lifted it now. Are we going to be looking at, I mean, when she said that, I'm thinking surely we're looking at masks. And then this whole vaccination thing.
She's right.
That's going to be a sticky issue there.
It does create segregation, which could lead to bullying
And how we...
on, on both sides of it.
I think, the, the one part though, I think she heard wrong. Yeah. Because we are wearing masks through the end of this year. Right. Yeah. And that's what, but I...
I, no, she, she was talking about coming into the fall. Isn't it going to be used when it comes to the fall?
I didn't say fall jokes.
She did. She clearly said that. And since, you know, we've already are sitting here talking about using the school as a, as a vaccine clinic, I think it's a legitimate question. Where do we go with this? You know, how far are we going to go with, you know, what, you've been vaccinated, little Susie's been vaccinated, but Johnny hasn't?
I don't think the school board has made any decisions at all about what happens after the graduation date.
We didn't make a decision on the school being used as a vaccine clinic either.
Wait, is that something?
Be fair, I share, I share every time that we, with the board.
Yeah.
Be fair.
We receive the information.
Every time I share with the board that our attention's where, and then after it happened, I share with you, the folks that attended and what we're going to do next. So I just want that to be fair.
Thank you.
And I think it would be, be the EDS going to tell us what, I mean, we're following the Department of Health.
Which I think we're back to that attestation, attestation, so maybe we shouldn't go there right now.
Actually, just so you know, as of the end of this month, that also ends.
May 31st. May 31st.
May 31st, the attestation, all that ends.
And praise God, there's two referendums passed.
Motion for executive session?
Yeah.
Students of the month.
Okay, let's do that.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate my motion.
Good deal.
Okay, middle school students of the month or?
Oh, okay.
High school student council.
Good evening. My name is Macy Whibkey and I'm with the student council. Our 2021 promise tomorrow night at the West Alexander Fairgrounds, starting with grand march at 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, with a junior and senior prom corps being recognized. We have over 200 students attending, as well as a strolling magician, a DJ for music, multiple food trucks will be providing our dinner, and a huge fireworks show at dusk. We would like to thank Mrs. Lee, Mrs. Urbannick, Mrs. Ross, Mr. Bonus, and Mr. Wilk for all of their efforts in making this happen. Graduation for the class of 2021 is set for June 4th with our ceremony slated for the stadium at 7:00 PM. We will also set up for our ceremony in the gym if bad weather is pending. Over the past two weeks, the high school has administered over 160 advanced placement exams in both the written and digital formats. The last of these will be administered next week. A big thank you to Mrs. Macbeth. Freshmen and sophomores are two-thirds done with end of course Pennsylvania Keystone exams. The Keystone Biology exam will take place on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. The University of Pittsburgh Medical Center hosted a COVID vaccination clinic at the high school on May 13th for students over 16 years of age and adults from our community. UPMC will be returning the first week of June for the second shot. The senior awards assembly will be held on Wednesday, June 2nd, and baccalaureate will be held Thursday evening, June 3rd at 7:00. Western area career and technology center held their graduation ceremonies the last three nights at their campus. 16 McGuffey seniors will graduate from W A C T C. The last student day of school is Monday, June 7th. 16 student athletes qualified for the Whipple Track Individual Double-A Track Championships. They are as follows. Clara Barr, Andrea Brownlee, Hope Bundash, Kirkland Chippaletti, Connor Corbly, Isaiah Dale, Jocelyn Dames, Maddox Ganster, Lydia Henderson, Bryn Claire, Kalen Thomas, John Todd, Ryan Tremel, Macy Whibkey, and Rainey Shigenda. Junior Clara Barr won the 110 hurdles and qualified for states. I would also like to congratulate Connor Corbly, Andrea Brownlee, John Todd, Jocelyn Dames, Macy Whibkey, and Kirkland Chippaletti for placing in the Whipple Championships. The baseball team is playing at W N J tonight in the Whipple Baseball Playoffs versus South Allegheny. The baseball team won the first section championship for McGuffey in school history. This morning, the athletic department hosted a ceremony for athletes and their families attending college who are continuing their playing careers. 16 student athletes will move on to play collegiate sports from this year's senior class. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably excuse my relations. Excuse me.
As a slight update, the baseball team won tonight 5-0. They have a game on Saturday.
I would just like to thank the student council rep. She's done an outstanding job this year coming and educating the board. Thank you very much. I figured this would be her last meeting.
Each month in the 2020, 2021 school year, we'll be nominating and selecting students of the month based upon their display of pride characteristics, preparation, respect, involvement, dedication, and empathy. This month, we will recognize two students from May. For May, students of the month, we had 12 teacher summit nominations for 20 different students. We also had 30 different staff members participate in the voting.[1631.38]